The table in that corner of the room has the documents pertaining to this meeting that you'd like possibly to follow along with, including a copy of the agenda. And the first item on the agenda is an invocation which, if you will, let's pause for a moment.
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing first, that's right. I got to get together, y'all got to help me. All right. So we'll have a regular meeting. They're supposed to start as soon as the public hearing is over. The public hearing starts at five. So, Madam.
Yes, sir.
Enthrum Town Manager.
So, in your packet tonight that the public received is the budget ordinance, and we're having the public hearing on that. It is balanced in accordance with the North Carolina Budget and Fiscal Control Act. The board held four meetings prior to this and made recommendations. The total budget before you, as in this ordinance, is $31,791,435. It focuses on the commissioners' goals and their budget priority areas, which were high-quality infrastructure, community improvement slash accessibility, communications, and growing human capital. Since the time of the June 3 meeting, which is the last time the board got together to make revisions, the differences that you see between that meeting packet and tonight's packet is that calculations for the ad valorem tax have been updated to match the county's scroll with the most recent version of the tax scroll that was listed in the budget message. And it gives the board available to appropriate in the general fund. The commissioners voted that the $3.90 increase on the sewer base charge would remain, but we did take out the proposal to charge for the first 2,000 gallons on both sides. So that is the difference that you see in these documents. We also did update the lease for the water tower, for those leases, to show the contract that you guys did at the last meeting, which was a too-close timeframe for it to show up in the budget message. That's all I have to tell you what changes are.
Thank you. We want to do public comments or commissioners?
Yeah.
So, all of us are on the same page. It is now time, an opportunity for anyone in the audience, if you'd like to be recognized and speak to the subject matter, which is our budget. If you'd raise your hand, be recognized, and come speak in the microphone to my right, and say what you have on your mind, questions or comments. Anyone? Don't run over each other trying to get up here. I know everybody can't be happy. Maybe everybody is.
It's a good day.
It is. All right. Last call. Anyone want to speak? All right. Madam Enthrum, Town Manager, is there anything else we need other than the comment being closed?
No, sir. We're just having a little bit of technical difficulty for one of our first guests that we're simultaneously working on down here, but we're good on the budget.
Okay. Well, I'm ready to close the hearing. That's in order. All right. Last call again. All right. Public comment has ended. Now, anybody here want to make a comment or anything before we go on with our regular meeting?
No, sir.
All right. Now, we're going to do the regular meeting agenda, which, again, I'm going to ask you to bow your heads, moan in silence, and reflection. Okay. Thank you very, very much. We officially call the meeting to order and again welcome all of you. And this stand, item number three, pledge allegiance to the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, consideration of approving the agenda as submitted. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as written. I'll second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The agenda is approved. Madam Clark, conflict of interest?
Part six, Rule 13 E of the 2024 Rules of Procedure requires members to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. Please state if you have any potential conflicts. Mayor Holden?
None.
Mayor Perot and Myers?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Smith?
No conflict.
Commissioner Thomas?
No conflict.
Commissioner Dyer?
No.
And Commissioner Parkus?
No conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, consideration of approval of minutes from May the 20th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, second. Comments, discussion, hearing now. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Minutes stand approved as presented. Public comments on agenda items at this time. Later on in the meeting, you'll have an opportunity to talk about anything you want, but right now, we're only addressing agenda items. And the first person that has signed up, is there anyone that thought they had signed up that maybe forgot, whatever? We have three people, the first being Sylvia Page.
Well, I know y'all have missed me for the last couple of months, but I had a little accident, fractured my ankle and my wrist, and so I was a little under the weather. But anyway, I wanted to address item nine on the agenda regarding the bond referendum. I wanted to make a couple of suggestions. As you are aware, there are many individuals that own property at Holden Beach that pay the same amount of taxes as those of us that do get to vote, but they don't claim Holden Beach as their primary residence, therefore they can't vote. I feel it's important, if you hear what they have to say about this issue on the bond referendum. I only saw on the proposed schedule of items to be accomplished, one public hearing that was scheduled for August the 19th, which is the Tuesday. Most of those individuals do not live here full-time, so they can't be here on a Tuesday, more than likely at 5:00 for a public hearing. So I'd like to suggest that perhaps you might consider having one additional public hearing on that Saturday prior to that, which will be August the 16th, so that at least that they could provide any input that they would like to provide. The other item, I don't know, I think it's page five, but it was the supplemental from H D R that came out separately. It was the resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the certain facts, statements of fact concerning the proposed bond issue. Item E on that raised some question for me, and several people asked me about it. It says increase in taxes, retirement of debt, and it says that the increase in taxes, if any necessary to service the proposed debt, will not be excessive. I guess I wonder, is that an accurate statement? I would hope that there's going to be some more specific information perhaps provided. As it was indicated, I think it was the May meeting, I believe it was, in the documents, that the amount of property tax liability increase per year would be included. But I don't see that anywhere, and maybe it's just not there yet. But that's, I guess, maybe you're going to work that out. I'm not sure if you've just haven't gotten that number yet. But that's a pretty vague statement. If you're expecting voters to vote yes or no on this bond referendum, they need to know what kind of tax increases would involve, or if there would be no tax increase, or if it's not going to be excessive. But what does excessive mean? I mean, that means different things to different people. So, as you know, the pier project is a sensitive, and it's an important project for many people, and it's created a lot of divisiveness for our town. So I think we need to be clear about what we're going to do. So I'm just asking you, if you're going down this road for the bond referendum, which it seems like we are for November, that you seek the input of all taxpayers, and that you provide clarity as to what this is going to mean as far as the property taxes are concerned, so that the voters know exactly what they're voting for or what they're running against. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. Item eight, considering the possible action on the H D R report. I just glanced at that when I got in. They are talking about $17 million for another pier. We're just, then we're going to put in a new pier, and we're just paying the pain forward 30 years from now, or when the next big storm hits. I think with all of this, when we're asking the community about it was, and I see this more and more from more and more people, not having a pier. I'd love to have a figure on just demolishing the pier, so that when we go forward with this, and we do, and we do have a referendum, we can say to the townspeople, this is what it would cost to just remove the pier and have no pier. Items 13, 15, and 16 are all finance-regulated to that end. We have, we have a beautiful area now right by the existing pier that is just kind of laying there fallow where the buildings were, after the structures were torn down. If we put down some gravel and make them into parking spaces, they would more than pay, they would probably generate thousands and thousands of dollars of revenue over the next, you know, the next 10 weeks, the next 15 weeks. I think it should be something that should be addressed and looked into. It's a cheap fix, it's an easy fix. I mean, what's, what's two tons of gravel? $80? You know, I think it's a good, it's a great return on investment, something that we should be looking into. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer.
Will Carter, 108 Starfish Drive. I attended the probably unassociation meeting over Memorial Day and talked about having a survey go out to taxpayers, and Maria Surprise told me, well, we've already done that during the pier referendum. They sent out 2,309 different postcards to everyone to have them return and say whether you would like the pier or not. There was nothing nice said about the pier, it was just, you want to spend this money right now or not. It came back 40.24 and 59.8 against. That's 9.8 between being 50/50. And that was only with 969 responses. So there's about 1,400 people that never got a chance to say whether they wanted to do it or not. The idea that the property owners had was an excellent idea. I think the town needs to do that with Holden Beach, the town of Holden Beach on that, on that postcard as opposed to the Property Owners Association. I talked to 10 people, two people filled out that postcard, the other ones haven't even seen it. So I believe that with 2,300 property owners on the beach being able to voice their opinion, the town can use this further on down the road for many other different questions we might have, where we want to know the taxpayers' input. And, you know, we founded this country on the revolution of the taxation without representation, and this town needs some representation from the people that actually pay the bills. 2,309 people do not represent all the properties that taxes are paid on. There are over 3,000 people that pay a tax bill on the sewer alone. And so 2,309 people means there's a lot of multiple property owners on the beach that should have a lot of votes as per how many properties they have. I believe if we do this, it'll be better off. I'm scared to death of a referendum when we've got the number-one vote getter of all time, Tom Myers, at 270 votes. Nobody's ever gotten that many votes.
And the board as a whole.
And the whole, as the board as a whole, Alan Holden was able to beat, win by, with 431 votes, he was able to win by 38 votes in the election. Tracy Thomas, Commissioner Thomas, was able to get 251 votes, the second-all-time big vote getter, and that's a hell of a comeback from the five votes she got when she ran the first time. Rick Parfus was also one of the, one of the big leaders. Paige came in, Paige Dyer came in third with 168 votes during that time. It was 80, 80-some votes difference between first and third in that election. But I believe that the taxpayers need a vote, and I don't, I'm scared to death of a referendum where there's a whole lot of votes that come out of nowhere all of a sudden, mail in and out.
All right. That concludes our public comments. We're on number eight. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Will Fuller from H D R is here to give you some further explanation or to answer questions on your supplemental letter that went into the packet. They were asked to, ahead of their...
I can't.
Okay. Things just us two so far?
Okay.
I think our audio for our special guest finally started working.
I had said there was one participant when I joined. I assume that's Heather, but I don't know.
Yeah, when I came in, so there were two, so I think it's counting yourself as well.
Y'all are being heard. Please stop talking.
Our bond attorney and financial advisor.
So, Will is here. Sorry about that. Got me a little off-kilter there. $7,300,000 is the not-to-exceed number, which they had to provide in order for us to do the next action item in the agenda packet. They were asked to provide this number ahead of when their draft report was due. They did meet your deadline of getting it here for tonight's meeting, but we were not able to put it into the original packet that went out and had to send out a supplement. So with that, we'll all turn that over to you for any questions and answers the board may throw your way.
Thank you. So, as mentioned, we were asked to pull up a N T E, a not-to-exceed number. Just to, I want to establish, you know, that not-to-exceed is not your best price or what price would be if we knew what the methodology was. That's just, with all things considered, what the upper bound limit is. So if y'all go and put this bond in, it won't exceed that amount. So naturally, by definition, that N T E is going to be an upper bound limit, so just wanted to establish that. And yeah, do apologize for the last-minute theatrics on getting that number in. We didn't intend for that to happen, but just want to shout my team out for getting it accomplished, because not only was it on a shortened timeline, our scope goes to 30%, which stops that preliminary design. We had to get into a constructibility review in order to really flesh out this number. Knowing what the implications are in delivering this, we didn't want to just go in and short-change, do the bare minimum, so we felt it necessary to go ahead and go into that initial constructibility review. And from that, that's where we got that $7.3 million at, as Ms. Ferguson mentioned. And that is after our contingencies applied, so that's the final number, no higher. So what that number uses is it does use a trestle approach. And the trestle approach, you know, it's definitely fair to say that it is either going to double, if not more, the cost of the pier itself, the structure of the pier, a work trestle, where you just build out a steel platform for it to work off of, as opposed to doing that top-down, or a barge and land-based approach. The trestle gave not only a way for us to give a reasonable price estimate without having to try and predict the weather, and weather delays in the barge and everything else along those lines, but, you know, it also did provide the most expensive upfront bid costs. And I can get into more, into the difference in the front-end versus the back-end cost, if y'all would like. But, so that is where we came up with it at, and, you know, the rationale also for using that trestle is that we're not able to know ahead of time what your contractors would want a bid on. If we priced this out at what we thought might be the most, you know, proper, on-the-nose amount, and they all happen to be the barge and land approach, and then you get three contractors that come in and apply, and every single one of them bids out with a trestle, we're going to, you know, blow past what they come up with. So that's why it was just pretty important to stick out with what came out to be the highest initial bid amount, methodology. So with that, be happy to discuss any further, and let me know if there's any questions we can answer.
Ms. Parfus? Thank you, sir. I apologize for not glancing. You got to help me, too. I just want to make clear that as we move down the road from 30% design to, say, 60% design, you are going to have opinion of probable cost for construction of this pier. And at that time, you will have probably done a little more homework and got an idea of what the most likely construction method will be, which in my opinion is probably going to be a barge, a crane barge or a spud barge. But just to let people know, this is, you know, this is the ceiling that we're going forward with, because once we establish this number, we can never ask for more. So it's, it's a very conservative number, correct?
It is absolutely a conservative number. You know, as mentioned, this is the upper bound that we would report for, for the potential construction at this time.
And the trestle method is the most expensive?
Upfront. So what you always have to keep in mind is that if you go with something like a barge and a land-based approach, you're at the mercy of the conditions. So, you know, a barge might cost $10,000, $15,000 a day to rent, and that's not even getting into the other equipment. You have a two- or three-week, two- or three-week storm in, you're still paying for that barge despite it being offside. And there's a lot of risk for the contractors to have to try and meet the specific timeline on that as well, so that's going to impact their bid costs. So there is, it's very difficult to try and say what a barge-type approach would cost just because it's going to be at the mercy of the elements. There's a lot of variability, so you can definitely, you know, get that to be the most cost-effective, but at the same time, you know, there, there could be additional change orders with how long it takes to complete the project. And one of the perks for a trestle is that once it's built, you're pretty much able to rock and roll. Those guys are out there, they're working off the trestle, they're doing their thing, they're moving. Meanwhile, you know, when you have turtle season coming through, so I think it's April through November, I want to say, or October, you're basically not able to do any work on the land, you know, touching, you know, the habitat. And there are exclusions you can get to work as long as you're not on, on the ground. So from that trestle, they're able to still get a lot of work accomplished. So when you have that barge approach, the timelines become much longer. And in addition to needing to have to work around that weather, you're then probably exposing yourself to more of this moratorium. So, you know, if you aren't able to get it accomplished right before that April moratorium, well, now you're waiting until November for it to end in order to continue the work. So there's something to be said about that.
Timing will be everything.
Timing is everything. It could definitely be the difference between six months on the project or off the top without any work changing. And a trestle approach, from what we understood in our initial investigations, could be about half the time of what it would take to do that barge method. With good conditions, you know, it'd be a lot closer. You know, obviously, you can't pull out a crystal ball and forecast that, but you're going to be getting a faster construction sequence with the trestle basically every time.
Okay. I would expect permitting to put a trestle out there would be a challenge. I don't know. I'm not familiar, but I, you know, that's pretty...
So it would be another layer to it. With that said, though, in large waterfront construction, you do typically have a lot of trestles, so this isn't like the first time Canada would have seen a trestle. So you certainly will have to have that addressed, but, you know, as long as your, you know, eyes are dotted and t's crossed, it should be, be able to run through it.
Me personally, I'm satisfied with this upper limit number. I think it gives us plenty of headroom. We haven't looked at town resources that we may apply as well there. So thanks for hustling it up and getting this to us. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to thank you as well very much for getting what we needed. I realize we kind of asked for above and beyond what we originally had discussed for work, and we weren't aware of the schedule we needed to operate to, to actually get something on the ballot in November. And I thank you for responding, for doing the extra effort, for speeding it up, and getting us the number we really need at this point in time. So I appreciate all your efforts and the due diligence you put into coming up with this number.
Ms. Rick?
Again, you keep talking about a trestle. I don't, I may not be having the engineering expertise that I fellow commissioners do. Exactly how does that process work?
Yes, sir. So a trestle is where you're basically building the second pier, is the short of it. So what they'll do is they'll go out, they'll drive steel caissons, piles into the ground, they'll build a steel deck, they'll build a steel ramp to get up to it, and then that is what the construction equipment will work off of, as opposed to the ground or as opposed to a barge. So you've basically got two piers side by side, and that's going to be also the same workspace that they'll use for the demolition. So what we're going to, what you would shoot for in the permitting would be to have the pier basically move on the other side of that trestle, the new pier, so that way the trestle will be in the middle, and then you'd be able to both construct that new pier on one side and demolish the old pier from the other side, and do it all at that same trestle.
Yeah, but you, but you said that would be the most cost-effective?
Upfront. Yes, sir.
Most expensive up front.
Oh, excuse me. I thought it was costly. I thought you said the most costly. That would be the most expensive upfront.
That's the most expensive.
Yes, yes.
In watching that pier and other piers in my time here, I've seen where they actually
started building the pier and would use the pier itself to put the piles in. I mean, it's, again, that, to me, would make the most sense. And again, you know, it's, you know, we don't want to put a D9 bulldozer up there. You're going to have a, you know, a vehicle, maybe a bobcat or something like that to handle the poles and the jets, and then a driver and that kind of stuff. Is that, would that not be the most economical way to do it?
So the, what you spoke of is called a top-down approach? And that was one of the initial...
Exactly.
...potential considerations that we had. When, when the board decided to go with a pedestrian loading, that precluded that top-down. Because the top-down, to your point, you might not need a D9 bulldozer, but you do need a crane, you know, like a large crane that's able to drive those piles. That, that top-down approach would need to be able to support both the dead weight of the pier itself, so the wood, when you just tend to the wind forces, the crane itself, the pile as it's coming, and then the force of driving that pile. So you're having to beef that structure up. I will say that when we designed this pier, knowing that it would be uninsurable, we tried to make it on the structurally high-integrity side, so it's getting to that top-down, but it still would not be rated for the load rating that you'd have to have for that crane. I think, if I recall correctly, in our initial investigations, you would need something like 50 or 60 tons of support for two bents, which is just two of those piles, where you have to support 50, 60 tons of pressure, which you're not getting from a pedestrian loading. So it's, it is more, more of an intuitive sense to go from that top-down. I would agree 100%. But it's just, it's a different design, and then also you're back to needing, likely needing some barge workers or land-based support as well, which gets you back into that exposure to the elements.
Okay. I just, I just remember it being built originally, and again, it wasn't a crane, it wasn't, you know, it was a, it was a truck that had a hoist on it that, that did the work. I just don't, I, again, you see, you know, engineering, I don't understand, but it's, you know, sounds like overkill to, to get a pedestrian bridge, I mean, a pedestrian pier built.
Yeah, I mean, I can add that, we did hear information from one of the contractors who had built the pier. They, you know, I saw the pictures, I saw the video of it working, so I'm not, not arguing with you at all on that. But one thing that, to keep in mind is that as an engineer, we're going to have to put our seal on this, and we take liability for it. So if the contractor wants to go out and take equipment that that pier's not rated for, it might support it, and obviously it did in the past. But with that said, if something were to go wrong, or there's anything in there that does not happen as it should, it's on the engineer who has that liability, and we're not going to try and have, you know, a pier set for pedestrian and then you're working cranes all over it.
Ms. Parfus? Just a couple of things here. When you do the design, you're telling a contractor what you want built, you're not giving him the methods of construction. So he may find an alternative method. You're probably going to have to prove what he wants to do, but we're not saying you're definitely getting a trestle method. We're just saying that's the most expensive way upfront in order to determine this not-to-exceed number. So...
This is just, in my opinion, that just puts out a really high number that, you know, everybody would say, wow, to where is. My question would be, in your professional opinion, what would the real cost be?
I cannot speak to that. That's going to come down to contractors. It's, I'd be having, and to the commissioner's point, we do not dictate means and methods. We just say what needs to happen, we say what it's loaded for, and you, I don't want to say typically, but basically every time, you'll have some sort of construction inspection going on, some monitoring of the process. We would be able to provide that service, and I'd just say if we did provide that service, we would, we would require the contractor to submit a plan, a work plan, that says how they're going to accomplish it, what they're going to do. And if we find that that work plan violates our designs and our recommendations, we would, you know, basically say, hey, this isn't going to work, and you got to find a different way to go about it. You know, you can, the town can do their own inspections, and at that point, you know, we're not coming into play there. But if you're having an engineering firm performing those inspections... those inspections, they're going to want to see some sort of a work plan ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you for your efforts on this, I appreciate it. I just, not, it's not all going to be taxpayer dollars. When we started this project four or five years ago, we implemented paid parking to help pay for this, and bringing in nearly a million dollars a year, you know, I think this is a doable project.
Can I say something, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Rick, actually, I heard you say that at another meeting. That is not true. We implemented paid parking a year before we even bought the pier, so paid parking was not implemented to pay for the pier. It was implemented to pay for the expenses that we have related to parking, which is garbage and bathrooms, and that parking money is already used in our budget to pay for salaries and new pavilions and everything. That money is already allocated to things, so there's really no additional money that would go to the pier at this point.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Thomas, I understand your points, your point of view, but you weren't in, on the board at that time and don't understand the discussions that were going on beforehand. That's it.
Anybody want to say anything?
I don't, I don't know if this is the right place to have the discussion, but since it was brought up by Commissioner Thomas, I don't... To say that taxpayer, tax increase will be the only way to pay for the pier is, I don't think is fair. We could still consider private-public partnership, we consider donations. I don't think by putting the burden on all the, just on the taxpayers, it's still doable without it all just being a tax increase.
Ms. Parker?
I was hoping to have this later when we got to the resolutions, but remember, we hired a financial advisor who's going to look at the town's resources, both perhaps cash on hand, revenue, and the B part line, to see if there's some revenue there that we could possibly apply to paying for this. Once we have 30% plans and a cost estimate, we can now go looking for grants and things of that nature, because we can say, "This is what we want to build, and this is the kind of money we're looking at." So, Paige, you're correct, I don't think it's all going to fall onto a tax increase. What we're essentially trying to do here, and I'm jumping the gun, is we're asking for permission to have a line of credit that we may never use, or we may only use a small part of. It's also important to note, and I will refer everybody to the minutes from the last meeting, that the bonds will not be issued until after we've received bids. Bond debt can also be paid with other revenue sources after the fact, I believe. So, what we're trying to do, because we have to go through this process to get the LGC to give us permission to issue bonds, it has to come with a referendum. It has to come down to the voters, like you don't like it. So, we're just trying to get this process going. That I'm hoping the number will be much less, which would be involved with the bond. To answer Ms. Page's concern, during the last meeting, there was an actual form, it's actually the language for what has to be in the referendum, and it says, "The town's going to borrow up to this, and the tax increase per $100 is going to be this." So, if you know what your house is worth, you can figure out what you're going to pay. Now, the pier is not insurable, so I don't think you're going to find a commercial lender to give you money unless you have some type of collateral. So, our choices are limited. What we're looking for is a tool that we may deploy in order to get this job done. This is, if you need to get some additional money, this may be the tool to have. We're a long way from actually putting these things out there. It'll be after the next election before the LGC even looks at giving us permission. But it's important today, we need to say, "It'll never be any more than this." So, we're planning for the worst, we're hoping for the best. So, and that's why this number's excessive, this is why the construction method is expensive, because we don't, we don't want to come in and tell you it's $3 million and find out it's a $7 million project. So, I was going to run through that later, but that's, this is the point to get the process kicked off, so we have, it's kind of like having a home equity line. You don't want to use it, but if you have to, it's there in an emergency. Thank you.
You want to add?
Thank you, Rick.
So, do we need to have any action on this, Christie?
Just for the board to receive the report, which I think you can do by consensus, so that you can use it for your next discussion.
Okay.
Is that all over the board?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Chair declares consensus, the board, Madam Clark, to accept that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And despite our efforts down here between texts, trying to find out if they're still online or not, I think they've gone down online with the system, so I need a moment to call both of them on the phone, and they're going to come through this.
Hang on one second.
No, I'm trying to connect. It says not connected, and I'm clicking Bluetooth.
Smartphone disconnected.
Hey, I'm going to hang up, guys, and try to connect and call you back. Is that one the Jabberspreak 710? Yeah, it's just doing this. Oh, it says connected now. Are you on there, Scott? Hello?
Yep, I can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yep, sounds like you're sort of in the top.
Hey, hold tight, adding Andrew. Hey, Andrew, emerging calls. Okay, I think we have you both. Scott, do I need Carlos as well?
No.
All right, I think we're good. So, as far as this item goes, the number that the HDR just provided you guys was the 7.3 million. That's a not-to-exceed number, and these gentlemen have told us before, but I will reiterate again that if we start, if the board starts this process, and they put a number that's too small on all of these documents, and then it comes back in higher later, then the whole process has to start over. Instead, if they use the not-to-exceed number, that is the highest number HDR is giving us, and then in August, if we find out when they finish their report, that that number could come down, the number can always be lowered, but if you start the process where you have to raise it, you have to start over again. And then before, I kind of turn things over, just some background history for you. In your packet that went out, we gave you the draft document, so you could get comfortable with what the language says, in case you wanted to have any comments. And then the supplement went out with the actual figures put into this weekend, or actually, Monday, from, once we got the numbers from HDR. Finally, I think it came up in the discussion, as you guys were talking about the last item, but we did have our pre-scoping meeting with the LGC, which is required before they want to take action on an application. At that meeting, I was advised that at every public hearing or meeting that we have where this item is discussed between now and the time that the application goes before them, the public must be told that a construction of a new pier is uninsurable. So, it can be insured for things like fire and vandalism at an extremely high cost, but your wind and water events that you would see with a hurricane-type event, it cannot be insured for. That was not them giving us that information, they tasked us with doing some research to find out, because that did come to them from another town where someone ran into that issue. If you want to ask what does that mean, or why do they care, in the future, should a pier get constructed, and then should a hurricane hit and take the pier out, a GO bond pledges the full taxing power of the town, so whatever it ends up that the tax rate is, if the pier's gone, there's a potential that you're still paying the tax on that until we end the process, the debt is paid, and there could be people at that time that come to whoever's sitting in these seats or the LGC and say, "I'm paying taxes on something that doesn't exist." So, I have now done what I'm supposed to do per the LGC to inform the public. All right? And then I will turn the discussion back over to the mayor to recognize, folks, we do have both our bond counsel, Scott Leo, and Andrew Carter, our financial advisor, on the phone.
Commissioners, do you have questions?
I have one. Actually, a question was raised earlier in the resolution of the Board of Commissioners, I don't know which attachment, page 18 of our packet, but item E says, "Increase in taxes, retirement of debt." The increase in taxes, if any, necessary to service the proposed debt will not be excessive, and we're kind of hung up on the word excessive, because that's kind of subjective to different people, so can you elaborate on what that means?
Hey, good evening, this is Scott Leo. Yeah, so these findings really track, these track the findings in the statute that the local government commission will have to find for their approval of the bonds, and so this language really comes straight from, straight from the statute. You know, the way I interpret it is that, you know, that you're going to, your tax rate will be what's necessary to pay back the bonds, but it won't be more than is necessary to pay back the bonds, you know, for this particular purpose.
Okay, thank you. There's one other thing, it'd be helpful if you could elaborate. We've had discussion about the referendum, a voter referendum, and just clarify, that is a requirement of issuing a GO bond, is that correct?
That is correct. It's, in order to pledge the full faith and credit of the town for this particular purpose, it requires a vote of the people.
Thank you.
Yes, do you have any suggestions on the uniqueness of our situation, as the majority of people that pay taxes here are not allowed to vote? As far as the timing of the public hearing, or is there a suggestion of a different time of the hearing to allow more people that own property that may not be here during the week, or should we have more than one public hearing? Or what do you, do you have any suggestions for the uniqueness of how would we would get more information from taxpayers that can't vote?
Are you asking me? This is Scott. I mean, I, so the process that I laid out for you, in that calendar that we talked about at the last meeting that I was at, is just the minimum requirement to get through the process. You can, of course, as a board, do more than that, should you want. And so, you know, if you, as a board, want to hold more public hearings at different times, that is completely your prerogative.
So, just the one hearing is what's the minimum requirement?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, that's what, yep, that's what's required to sort of get through the process. That's right, the legal process.
Okay, thank you.
More questions, comments?
I think Ms. Page made a good recommendation to at least have that one hearing on the Saturday, when people can get here, so I think that, and we can look at that further, but I think that's appropriate.
I also think we need to have one sooner than August, possibly, too. Because that's only giving you August, September, and three months.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I absolutely agree, because our next meeting won't be until July, and we want to have plenty of notice, so I'm all in favor of having a public hearing on August 16th. I don't know, you know, if we need to vote on it here, if that's appropriate, but I am worried that we're not going to meet again until July, and then we'll be pretty far down the path.
Yeah, the process, process that I've laid out, you know, as we talked about before, there are certain steps that have to happen, sort of one after the other, and so the particular timing of that public hearing in the progression of things, sort of meets, you know, meets that requirement to, that we're doing sort of everything in order, but of course, if you all, if you all want to do something before that, you know, just to hear people out, that, of course, is your prerogative.
Could you explain that a little bit more? It sounds like there's data that you would have that we would want to communicate at a public hearing, but you might not have it until a little bit later from now, or is that, is that what we're saying?
Well, yeah, so, as per that calendar, like, for example, some of the things that get produced is the statement of disclosure, and it has certain requirements for information that gets disclosed, like, you know, like the total interest cost based on, you know, certain estimates, and your estimate of what the property tax, what the property tax impact would be, and then some of that information gets loaded into the notice of public hearing that gets done for that public hearing that would get done in August, and so we're sort of progressing through that timeline and doing sort of one thing after another, in the order that the statutes tell us to do it in. And so, we'll be developing that material as we go, but, you know, but again, that's all information that we're going to be getting from you all.
So, I think what he's saying is, he, right now, we're planning on having the public hearing on the 19th. So, if we want to have one on a Saturday, it can't be before that, but it can be after, because he won't have all the data yet. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the data is what you, I mean, you all will be developing that data over time, so whenever it is that you're ready to have that public hearing, to tell people what you think the impact is going to be, you're welcome to do it. In addition to what you do, I would say we would still do that public hearing in August, you know, as part of the process, in addition to whatever else you all decide to do, at whatever time you decide to do it.
Ms. Parker?
Hey, Scott, when do we have to have that number for the referendum to the Board of Elections?
Well, the, I think the date that we heard from them was September 7th, and so, as you, as per the process that we've laid out, what's going to happen is, if we go all the way through the process, the last item that you all would do in, at the August meeting, after the public hearing, would be to adopt a resolution to send the question down to the Board of Elections. And it'll have, you know... And it'll have, you know, it'll have the question in the form that, you know, that I gave you, you know, with, with all the particulars filled in. And that would be the time that we would send it down to the Board of Elections. But I think they're, and we're hitting your August, your regular scheduled August meeting, but I think the deadline they gave us was actually, at least September, I think I'll have that date in mind.
I do.
Ms. Ferguson?
It's September 5th, Scott, instead of the 7th.
Yeah, we're very focused right now on construction costs. How much do we need to borrow, what kind of debt to construct? But I, we'll still hear, so we're also getting a life cycle cost for maintaining the pier going forward. So I don't think that's part of what the bonds are dealing with, but I think it is information that the public should know, that not only do we have to pay to build it, we're going to have to pay to maintain it for its useful life going forward. And we'll have those numbers, you know, I don't know if they're exhilarating, you know, what you call them, extra, but it's something I think, as a taxpayer, I would want to consider. How much is upfront in bound borrowing, and then what's the long-term commitment in terms of maintaining over the useful life of the pier? It'd be helpful to have all that for a public hearing so that we can give as much information as we have, so that people can form opinions.
Did that be ready by the 16th?
I don't know. We can call Will back. I should ask when HCR was here. They're working on it.
But he's sitting.
Yeah. Is that, is that out of order?
No, sir.
Will, can you say anything about the timing? If you could come to the-
Come back to the microphone, please. Is there an objection for this comment?
No, sir.
I know we've refocused you very much on getting the not to exceed for construction, but part of the scope of work, as I understand it, is you are also going to come up with life cycle cost, maintenance costs, repair cost, whatever.
Correct, out 30 years.
Out 30 years. And what's, and I'm sorry, I don't know the timing, but when would information be available for a public hearing?
We have the initial draft, I believe, is coming up in the 1st of July, and then that puts the final report where everything is finalized, August 4th, I believe, is that date.
Okay.
So that'd be before the August meeting.
Okay. So we could have it in the public hearing, though?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. I agree that if we got that information, that would be good information for the taxpayers. But again, as we've said, the, the taxpayers aren't going to be able to have the final say, which is a, which is a shame.
All right. Anybody else have a question? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Now, do you want to move forward from here?
So I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution 2503 and 2504.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone? Commissioners? Hearing none. Oh, Ms. Ferguson?
Could you add on that, that to allow staff to execute paperwork?
And allow staff to execute paperwork.
I'm good with that.
All right. Everybody understand the amended motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion? Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no? It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Are you satisfied with that, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Thank you all, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ferguson, you still up?
Page 21. Yes, sir. Our next item is a discussion with the Army Corps of Engineers and Mr. Bob Kiesler, who we've worked with many times over the years, is here to do a presentation for you guys. The background on this is the town has been working. We have a stormwater master plan that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, and stormwater has been at the forefront of one of your goals of what you plan to work on. Back in the fall, the town did fall under the effects of potential tropical cyclone eight, and as part of that, applied for environmental infrastructure funding from Congress. Did receive that earmark. The way that works is it flows directly to the Corps. We do not get a big check that says Town of Holden Beach. And so we have to then get our funds from the Corps, which they provide 75% of the funding, and we have to match with 25%. So Mr. Kiesler, I'll turn things over to you for your presentation.
Good evening. Can you guys, I'm going to scroll, you gave me a PDF that you can, I'll just scroll for you. All right. Good, good, good evening. I just want to start off by talking through what Section 5113 Environmental Infrastructure is. Remember, the Corps is project-funded, Congress authorized, they give us permission to do something, and then they have to appropriate. So if you got a slide number two there? Sure, will. So just a quick section 5113 over. It's one of 22 environmental infrastructures that Congress has passed across the country over the years, was actually authorized in 2007. Money was never, was never appropriated. And the word 24, it was modified and funding was provided. What is there is four non-federal interests through design and construction assistance for water-related environmental infrastructure projects that will be publicly owned and operated. This is a sponsor-led project, so the non-federal sponsor leads, the Corps reimburses the project, provides QA. Cost share is 75% federal, like Christie said, and 25% non-federal. What is required to get started is execution of a public, excuse me, execution of project partnership agreement, and we've provided a draft for that for consideration. Go to the next slide, please. So I'll give you some, some key overview of what the PPA, or Project Partnership Agreement, includes. It specifies the cost share ratio, like I said, 75-25. Based on the information from your stormwater master plan, appreciate y'all providing that, it was, y'all voted to approve that August 24. We used that information to come up with a, a budget. We provided that budget in Congress as appropriated funds. It sets the ceiling for the amount of federal funds available for the federal share of the project cost. So $2.2 million is how much money we have, the Corps has to put towards the project. It talks about what is considered eligible as far as the project cost, explains roles and responsibilities, provides guidance for invoicing middles, and establishes expectations with records management and all. So this is a project that all would be leading, you can handle the scope, schedule, budget, provide any permits, do your design, advertise a contract, construct a contract. As we go through the process, as you submit invoices, we provide 75%, you provide 25% as we go through the project. So, here's the next slide, I'm sure we got questions when we come back. What I want to talk about here is takeaways, and I've kind of said this a couple times, the town manages the work, we reimburse eligible project costs and provide QA throughout. Any project cost that exceeds the ceiling established in the PPA, be paid by the non, to be paid by the non-federal sponsor 100%. Sponsor owns the infrastructure upon completion and responsible, all owing in responsibilities. This is just one, like I said, one of 22 cost formations that are available for different parts of the country. The next slide talks about your specific project, and this information came right out of your stormwater master plan. That was completed, like I said, August, August of 24, contains strategies to address increasing risk to live property due to flooding events we've had recently. Y'all went through and prioritized the hotspots on your island. The two that were identified, locations that were identified, 300 block of Ocean Boulevard West is location one, and the east end of Mugg Street and Avenue A are location two. That came straight from your stormwater master plan. Ask more information about location one and two, that y'all know well about that and that. The last slide, and if we can answer questions. What are the steps? For us to have access to the money, we complete a letter of ports, that is fully funded with federal money. I have a draft in my hand. That information came from your stormwater master plan with the, with the cost information being August 24, and it's almost a year later. We've got it, complete NEPA, we put some contingency on this to give us, kind of like you have, the pier ceiling of what we think it might be. So the numbers we're talking about there is no, is not telling the public what we think it should cost, it's giving us a ceiling when we're making votes to cover. Letter of port is done, like I said, we've already done that, that's at our, our expense. Once the letter of port is approved, we've got a draft copy, the PPA can be assigned, can be signed and executed, upon execution, the PPA work can begin. Throughout the life of the project, it must stay within the scope established for the report. I'll give you examples, the Corps Jacksonville District had a, had a project that they went through the process to design and non-federal sponsor advertised something that didn't match the original letter of port, and they were thrown out of the project. Our scope today is those two locations, that's set by y'all's priority, that's what we'd like to build, local to build. The information that we got came from your stormwater master plan. So I'll be quiet when you ask questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any risk that the money will be taken away?
I can't see, I don't think so, no, ma'am. I mean, the money's, the money's been loaded in, it's in our check, I can't, the way things are going in the country, I can't say it, it won't be there. It's in, it's in our, we've got the money here, and I'm, knowing that what had just was passed and modified in 2024, took, we expressed capability, so we work for administration, we don't ask for money, we express capability. If Congress decides to provide the funds, we move to execute. We expressed capability and got the money in less than 12 months, which is, which is, I would say rare, but it's unusual.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ferguson?
And just to add on to that, I think some history there that you might be thinking about, Commissioner Thomas, is that some of the earmarks that have come through Congress in the past that went to the Corps, it was on a yearly basis for a match that it had to be appropriated again on the federal side, and then, you know, we had to have our match. But theirs has been front-loaded with this, and to kind of go along with what Bob's saying, that it would be unprecedented, that was one of the advantages that Warden Smith pointed out, that, you know, this has been front-loaded on their side, so it really would be something out of the ordinary for the money to be taken back, I guess.
The thing that was driving that question was what happened with the sewer station where we're in the middle of the project, and then they froze all our funds and said we had no idea whether we were really going to get them. So, that was, thank you.
Any more comments, questions?
Is there, maybe I'm missing a, a high-level timeline, or what's the current?
And, and I, I can provide a copy of our draft letter of port, it has more information. This came, came, the, the schedule came from your master plan, and also timing that the town provided as far as when you could get the budget money for your information. So we're estimating that we would execute a, a project partnership this summer, hopefully end of July, that's kind of what you're looking forward to, so you'd like to move forward. Talking with the town, we estimated about a year's worth of NEPA coordination. I think that's a little long, but that, that's the process. It's a two and a half a year from time to execute the PPAs to completing projects. So there you go. I have the dates written down here. We, we would finish NEPA in December 26, design would be completed June 26, issued January 27, and complete March 28. And those, I think also are, are conservative dates.
That, that page is not in here, Tom.
Yeah, I thought I saw it at one point, but now I can't find it.
No, it, it, I, I think you asked me by email, and I provided some information on what we had from the engineer, but we don't have what he's reading from.
Okay.
And I can give you-
Ms. Parkus?
So, to be clear, in order to seal the deal, we need to approve this PPA that we have before us tonight.
So that's a draft PPA, it's a model PPA, it's given to us by our headquarters office. You would say thumbs up. We're going to submit a package with, with our draft letter of port and the model agreement to our division. Division commander approves it, and he delegates it back to us, to Colonel Morgan, to be able to execute. So once it's approved, we send it back to the town to sign, and then we send Colonel Morgan to sign and execute, and then we move it down.
You wouldn't expect any changes to this document. It should be pretty much standard boilerplate stuff?
Yes, being a model agreement, I don't expect any changes, no.
Okay.
Ms. Thomas?
So Christie, just to be clear, I see your letter in here. We already, we have put 300,000 of our 25% in this year's budget, and next year, the following year, we would expect 250,000, is that, that's 25% of the 2.2 million?
The next year, if, if we're saying we're going over the two-year time plan, what is proposed in your capital improvement plan is 300,000 this year, and then next year, right now, it shows 1.9 million, because you have to spend the 2.2 upfront, and then they reimburse you 75%. So you have to budget for all of it. So right now, your capital improvement plan for next year shows 1.9. If some of that's going to spill over into the next fiscal year, you could take that 1.9 and take the amount that we ended up, and you would go two years out. But the only thing this affects for your budget is for your capital improvement plan, because I've expressed to Bob that we can't go over 300,000 for this coming fiscal year, which for us runs July 1 to June 30.
Okay, so really, when we approve this, we're approving the 1.9 million in the following year?
Yes.
From the capital improvement plan?
Yes, but what will have to happen, and the reason this says, in some of my discussions here, and I've talked to Bob about, in order for Daniel to certify on the financial page, our next year's budget would have to take effect. So that's why he can't sign until after July 1 to say that the funds are available, and that would be for year one. So we would only be able to certify that we had the 300,000 for year one, just for your understanding, then our next fiscal year would roll over, and we would appropriate the funding then.
Assuming there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the model agreement and direct interim town manager to have all the paperwork executed based on the July 1 budget start date for the financial certification, subject to the final agreement being identical to the one presented to us tonight.
Thank you, Rick. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Anyone? Doc?
I'd like to commend the staff. I think our stormwater plan was an excellent plan. We put it into effect in an appropriate time, and our staff did a wonderful job, and I'd like to thank them for executing it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion, questions? You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no? It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. And we thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Not only for this, but all the years of good work and service you provided to this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
We ready for Chief Dixon? Number 11 on the agenda.
Tuesday. How are y'all?
A long week.
Been a long week, and it's only Tuesday. That's correct.
Okay.
So we are in full-blown summer mode, as we expected to be. Before I get into some of the June, no, May numbers, trying to keep track of it, Commissioner Myers asked me a question in the last meeting about April's. There was a armed subject on the report, and I said I would follow up with you, and I had that opportunity, so I wanted to address that. It was a call we had here on the island. The short version is, it was, someone was flying a drone, and a neighbor went outside with a gun, so part of a public service announcement. Do not, do not respond to someone flying a drone with a firearm, so, but that's what that call was. It was resolved peacefully, no shots- that call was, it was resolved peacefully, no shots fired, but that's, that's what that call was, so that was just to follow up on that.
Not even drone season.
No, not even drone season, that's correct.
Can I ask you a question, Jeremy?
Yes, ma'am.
If you're in your home, and a drone is flying in your yard, watching you on your deck or anything, is that?
Yes, please call us, and we will go down there and locate the drone pilot and talk to them. Most of them, in all honesty, are doing it the right way, they're, they have their license, and they want to follow the rules, but yes, if you have somebody creeping around your windows, please call us, and we will address that.
I've been sitting on my porch and had one come right look at me, so.
Yes, yes, if you have that, please call us.
I think the canals are a popular location for them.
That's right.
We've seen them a lot fly up and down.
And I think most of the time, they're, they're looking at water, things like that, that they can in public places.
I don't have a problem with that, it's just when you're sitting on your porch and one's staring at you.
Staring at you, yes, that's right, it's a, it's a very uneasy feeling, so please call us if that, if that comes up.
Thank you.
As far as May numbers, it's just busy, I mean, we're, we're picking up, there's nothing really that jumps out on the report, unless you have questions, and I'll be glad to try to answer them if I know them.
Another one jumped out, shots fired was on this list, is that another drone, or is that on the island, off the island?
My, my guess would, and this is just a guess, probably fireworks. We, a lot of times fireworks calls gets coded as shots fired, and we'll get down there and find out that's not what it is. But I have not, none of the officers have come back to me saying any shots fired were anything that needed to be brought to my attention, but I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, nothing, nothing that I'm aware of. I'll note you that one. Some of the incident reports, some of the larcenies, there was nothing there that, there was a rash going on that was overly alarming, anything, some of it was construction stuff, things like that. Some beach equipment off the beach. And that's kind of what I got in the numbers there, like I said, unless you have questions. A more recent event, everyone's talking about the water rescue we responded to yesterday, so we did respond to a water rescue. That is still in missing persons that we're, all evidence is presumed drowned at this time, but we're, we're still searching for that young man. So, we're, that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. It's unfortunate, we're working with the family, and our hearts go out to them, and that's, that's where we're at.
And I understand our water rescue may have been used or not used, or?
So, during that one, the, the deployable, the new deployable rescue units, they were, they were not done. The Tri Beach Fire Department, their water rescue got on scene quickly, but, but those actual self-deployable units were not used during this particular incident. Yes, sir?
Chief Dixon, you know my pet peeve, and it seems to be there's a, another influx of our golf carts. The golf carts seem to be getting bigger than they have been in the past, especially with the kids facing backwards. But just in leaving our meeting here yesterday, I saw, you know, nine people in a golf cart. The kids on the back weren't belted in, and there was a small child in the center at the front. I just want to let everybody know the importance of safety in operating a golf cart. Here, the state law requires that they wear, all wear a seatbelt, and that especially children have to be in an approved child seat. So, again, I'm not, other than the zeros here, I, you know, it's pretty easy to see when there's violations, when there's like four kids in that back, and I know there can't be more than three seatbelts. But it's, it's, it's something that I believe this is the time of year, that if some, maybe some enforcement would start now, the ripple effect through the summer would maybe save a life.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, chief, for what you do.
Appreciate that feedback, and I, I don't know if, if you have, and not saying you particularly, but anyone in the community, we have been trying to do some more outreach, and before the concerts, we've actually had some low-speed vehicles set up, we've been trying to do some interactions and educate the public, and so we, we're definitely, we agree, the low-speed vehicle safety is a top priority, and we are definitely trying to educate and, and keep everyone safe, so.
Our vacationers sometimes aren't paying real close attention, and due to their decreased speed, you know, I'm just, it just makes me shiver sometimes, but thank you for what you do, chief.
Absolutely. And y'all come see us before the concert.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Evans, inspections, number 12.
All right. I'd like to answer the chief's report, whenever you have gunshot call, possibility it could be an inspector inspired. Inspections, everything seems to be closed well. If you look at the report, you'll notice there's a big red tag on it. We've actually got that glitch worked out, that was through our works through a permitting program, and we, we noticed about the bad first on the paddock, and they actually worked with it, figured it out, and got that fixed, which actually happened right before we got them. Active new home permits are 27, other active permits are 535. Permits issued over 30,000 are 79, permits issued over 100,000 are five. And then permits and substantial improvements, we have one, and I know there's one on the shelf over there. Permits issued waiting for pickup is 28, and the total permits in the shelf, on the shelf and in the box is 539. Permits in review right now are 10, kami issued is six, and zoning issued is 15. So, permit service for inspections this month was 106, and the total inspections made were 236. During this month, we had the opportunity to get, we finally got around to doing the bulkhead here and floating dock assessment. We went out, we took, we took a partial day, and what we found was, we got 73, we found 73 violations, and to date, we've actually sent out, we verified and sent out 24 letters of notice on those, and there'll be more going out. The problem we're having is, it's extremely difficult for us to tell where we're at in canals. So, once we locate them in the boat, we actually have to then try to go out and physically find them, if we can't ascertain what the addresses are, because there's no addresses on the canal side of these homes. Some people put them on. I would venture to say, I think we're, we're playing with a time bomb, because I think if we ever have a water rescue, or if we have a high flooding event and someone has to come in, they're not going to be able to find these houses. We have our time limit, even with the GIS, it's hard to locate it when you're in a boat. I've taken it upon myself on internal policy to instigate something that's actually in the building and the fire code, that basically says that I have the authority that whenever, I think it's a safety issue, I can stop requiring addresses to being certain, being in certain locations of homes, and I, the internal policy I have right now, I'm not fully implementing it, but I think we're getting ready for all new permits that are issued for piers and docks, and floating docks, there's going to need to either be an address on the home or an address on the structure, so that, that if we ever do have a water rescue or an emergency issue there that's coming in from the waterway side, we'll be able to find it. So, it's just, the town doesn't have an ordinance, but I think that we need to, either internally through a policy, or the town needs to decide to have an ordinance. Either way, it's going to happen, because I have this policy. So, it's up to y'all.
Rick, Mr. Evans, is there a way that you can maybe put something together to, to bring to the board, where we could make it part of an ordinance? I know, I know you can do it yourself, but I'd like to make it like official.
Well, I think it would be important, we, we.
I see it's important.
Yeah, I think it would be important to have it done, but I think the way we're doing it now, or the way we're going to implement it, is the best way to do it. I wouldn't make everybody do it, I would make it change over time. We hope that a lot of people would realize the importance of it, and go ahead and put them out there, but as we're permitting the new ones now, and a lot of them we're going to be permitting, there, there's rules changes now, but it's going to make them come to us to be permitted, and it's going to be a stipulation of the permit. If you want to get a final inspection, you got it.
So, not having to be forced to get it, if I'm going to put three numbers on my house, do you want them on the piling, or do you want them on the dock, a dock piling or a house piling?
I think it'll be up to, I think it'll be up to the property owner, they only need to be distinguishable, in other words, they can't blend into the back now.
Right, kind of like on the front of the house.
Yeah, it'd be at least four inches tall, half inch wide, kind of thing, that it'd be something.
Yeah, that's pretty easy for me to fix.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that our local hardware store over here keeps plenty of those for the one, I mean, we require it on ocean burn, we got water in the mouths, I don't know why we wouldn't.
We'll do it any different, exactly.
But it don't need to be mandatory, I don't think, I think we, it should be mandatory going forward for all new structures or repairs, but I don't think it needs to be mandatory if, until somebody, you decide.
It's a simple safety step that I know I can take.
That's right. Okay, and then, we've been working on the ADA assessment stuff, and what we've got is, we've got 20 locations that we've actually either done stuff to and improved, and we're working on a maintenance program for them. We've got another six or seven where we know we have deficiencies, so we're working on those updates for that, and we're hoping to get a, kind of an estimated cost here once we get the assessment done. I want to get with a recent partner, she promised that she'd help us a little bit, and we'll talk to her about it some, and tweak some of the things, and then I'm going to try to get something back to you on the ADA assessment. Give me some time, I'm thinking it's going to be September. And we fell behind a little bit, because we got some. Got a little update, y'all have me working on the fire station stuff, we've got, we've actually done and got a need assessment, we've done the site plan, I'm actually, we're counting houses now, we've actually verified that the location of our current fire station is where it should be, and I'm going to be talking, I haven't talked to them yet, but I'm going to be talking to our firefighters over there here pretty soon, and over with the chief, and David Boer, that y'all are familiar with, because I'm now getting into that portion like HDR is, where I'm, I'm not going to be able to go all the way into the 60%, but I'm hoping to be able to give y'all a cost analysis somewhere up in the upper limits, so you'll have some idea where we're going. But I have two things, just to let you know, that I got to do. I got to count houses, and I want to give it off to State Fire Marshal, see if they have any recommendations for future needs, and then I'll get something back. Put your hand in.
Ms. Parfitt?
That's excellent news to me, Tim. If you would be so kind, put a summary of that information on the action tracker in the town managers, for the town managers' report, so everybody can see it.
Okay.
And Neil?
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, I'm, that's great news, thanks.
Mr. Parfitt?
Yeah, and I don't know if this is right on target, but there's been a lot in the papers about other fires departments moving from a fire fee that we currently have on our property tax statement to a fire tax based on property value.
You probably more, know more about that.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to figure out if that, you know, for funding a new fire station, if that would come out with a tax, or especially, you know?
I mean, I think once we get a number, that's probably something we probably need to look into, to see how it's going to affect us. I can do it ahead of time if you.
I just, I know it's a hot topic in Brunswick County because of the growth, and curious what others are doing.
Yeah, I mean, I hope that we don't grow so fast that we can't keep ahead of that kind of thing, that kind of surprise.
I have a question about the ADR, ADA. There's been a couple of people that have commented about increasing the handicap parking, and one of the suggestions was, I think it was Quinn Street, is that something you're looking at? We've had a gentleman that have asked several occasions if there could be any additional...
Is that 114 OBE? 114 OBE never had more than five spots, there were never any designated spots. So, now there's actually five designated spots, and then there's one handicap spot up at the front that people don't utilize, that kind of gets missing against county. And we only call them five, because the one on the far end may not fully qualify.
I think it was asking about maybe additional on the right-of-way of Quinn, and I didn't know if that was something that was.
You're talking about on the other side of the road?
Right, on the right-of-way. I guess for somebody that's like not in a wheelchair, but can get closer to have access to that, that same walkway, but in the right-of-way across the street, I think they were just looking for like an increase.
Well, I think, now, you've got to remember that whenever you put handicap parking, you've got to have an access way. So, whenever you're on the other side of the street, it's not a problem getting across the street, but it is to get them on to this, get them on to a sidewalk. And I don't know, maybe my mind's just gone blank, it seems to me like Quentin Street is grass in that right-of-way area, so we would have to look at doing something in those right-of-ways there. But we've not, we've not looked at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Tim. Thanks, Tim.
Moneyman McCrady, number 13.
So, this month's time next fourth, we're approaching the fiscal year end, you're talking through the lines, kind of getting the data off, and to get a better picture where we're going to end up at year end. General fund, you can see, there's a pretty decent gap between revenues and expenditures that reflects a increase in fund balance, but after end-year transfers, that will slide, but going over to the water and sewer fund, you can see our expenditures across our revenues, that's due to the May posting, it hasn't happened yet, so, although they will still be very close, we will be in positive, barely. And looking over at DEPARK, it looks like a big increase in expenditures this May, but that's because lots of you said that it came out like May 1st this year rather than in But overall, DEPARK's been really, really good, really close to last year.
Thank you, Dan.
Any questions, Ms. Parfitt?
Just want to thank you for putting last year's curves on here.
Yeah.
Works great for me, thank you.
Good job.
Any more questions, comments, admissions? If not, thank you, sir. Town, interim town manager's report, Ms. Parfitt?
Yes, sir. On the Greensboro Street Lift Station, there is a meeting that's supposed to occur this next week with the engineer, the contractor, and town staff on June 26. The fourth application for payment came in from the contractor. State still lags in getting us payments, we're still waiting on dispersments two and three from the state, which is the same thing I told you last month. So, we've now been a month, we're still waiting on those dispersments. Staff has followed up on several occasions. The information we got back from DEQ is there was an internal glitch in their system in which it showed that payments were going out, and they were just sitting in the system, and nothing was happening. So, apparently that has been resolved, and just as we heard a month ago, and as we heard three weeks ago, and as we heard two weeks ago, the check is in the mail. Since the last report on construction, the contractor installed most of the cold-formed metal framing for the second floor pump and electrical room, has started installation of the wall sheathing, installed some of the ductile iron and PVC piping for the vacuum pump skid, and installed electrical conduit. The roof trusses are expected to be delivered, or were expected to be delivered the week of June 9th, because this report comes out before that happened. Just as of yesterday, the contractor had been in communication with the engineer, they have asked for a time extension on being able to complete their final construction and final payout because they had such delays with the Buy America, Build America waivers. The contractor asked the engineer to verify the things that still need to be done, the engineer in turn asked that we reach out to EPA to see if they'd be agreeable, because it still falls into the terms of when the grant budget timeline is. EPA has granted that extension, so we are all good, it seems, to give the contractor 72 more days to finish their construction with the time they needed to get back for their time they were lagging with waivers.
So, what date would that be?
Uh, no, you're good, I just need to go back to my email, I had too many things pulled up trying to communicate with people earlier. So, the engineer coordinated that they would like a revised substantial completion date of October 1st, and a revised ready-for-final payment date of October 31st, of which EPA has agreed to, and our engineer will be coordinating the DEQ. has agreed to. And our engineer will be coordinating the DEQ side of things because that's a lot easier. Block Q restrooms and parking. Plumbing has been installed as of the time of this report. New project superintendent taking over. I'm gonna let y'all know that when this park was constructed, I had an affectionate name for it. It had four letters. When this bathroom's being constructed, I am now calling that the Do and Redo Bathroom, because everything they do, they have to redo. We have had several meetings, including the architect meeting with the contractor. I and the building inspector, I don't wanna speak for Tim, but we do have some grave concerns about the work that's been done. The plumbing's had to come out. They've had to do some re, some redo on their, their compaction testing. I think that right now, the only way this impacts you, and this is since the time of this report that we've had a lot of this occur, is if they don't get what was programmed to be spent out of this year's budget as part of their contract, complete before June 30th, it'll fall back to fund balance and you guys may have to do a budget amendment after July 1, just to give you an alert on that. But there is frustration, at least at my level. This is something that makes me not want to sleep well at night because we are going round and round with this process right now. And that's why you see things that were in the ground now sitting on the side of the ground. Okay?
May I?
Yes, sir.
Completion date, performance requirements, penalties. Can you address that on that contract?
I do not have that contract in front of me, but we are engaged with the architect and he is holding their feet to the fire on it. And there have been other remedies being discussed at this point, which I don't wanna discuss in public for legality reasons.
And some other things you don't want to say in public?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So on our stormwater project, the Corps will, did present tonight on the EI project. We did hold a meeting with the Division of Coastal Management and our engineer regarding potential future permitting for the additional areas of concern and what type of permit, minor or major, would be needed for that. On the pier site, we held the third meeting with HDR on June 11th. No word yet as to that finding of the advisory committee on FEMA and CATG, but since the date of this report, do understand that President Trump has made some remarks in the news that after this hurricane season, that disaster declaration funding would fall to the states. Did meet with Grayson Overholt, Senator Tillis's office on June 3rd. Of course, that was before the time that those comments were made last week. He stated that Senator Tillis had submitted some reform recommendations, including pulling FEMA out from under homeland security. Those are still being considered at the federal level. It seems that we potentially are hearing that things are gonna move in a different direction. More to come on that as things come out in the press. Employee updates. We did have our officer, John, who was sworn in on Wednesday, May 28th as the newest officer. Conditional offer of employment has now gone to a graduating student of BLAT. Best odds to start is in July after confirmation of passing the state exam. This is Officer Austin Bell, who is the son of former police officer for Holden Beach, Shane Bell. And then Bryce Tripp started work with the Public Works Department on the week of June 9th. And besides updating, Tim gave you an update on the fire station from the tracker. I will update that our first takedown was Jordan Boulevard, the walkway, where we were doing some improvements there. Reported on that a little bit last month. We did do the, got the bids back, awarded the bid, and now we are in a permitting hurdle because we cannot issue our own permits on that side of things. It has to be issued through Wilmington. So that is not a problem. It will come, but it may not come before June 30th, which is fine because it'll just be one of the walkways we do next year instead of this fiscal year. We always budget for three. So. And then finally, to add other things that have happened, which are a lot since the timing of this report. Today, I was asked by Water Billing Utility Department to read this. And so it says, "Starting this month, June 2025, we transitioned to outsourcing our utility billing services, which the board voted on, to help ensure faster and more efficient delivery moving forward. As this is our first month, we encountered a few unexpected delays between the Harris system and our system. We appreciate your patience and understanding during this transition period." Now, the next is more of an ask than the way it was written here because it's part of your fee schedule. So the staff is recommending that for this month only, for June, that late penalties be, not, we don't apply them and we waive them for this transition period, but because this was presented to me today and because it's a part of your fee schedule, I can't just do that. So I'm gonna say by consensus with heads going up and down that that's okay, that we're okay. And if not, somebody needs to speak now and forever hold your peace.
It's okay, Christie.
Okay. And then finally, some good news also today. Did get word from our people at Warden Smith who keep us abreast of what's going on, that Representative Rouser did submit Holden Beach's Lockwood Folly Inlet Navigation Maintenance Project for 1.2 million forward as part of one of his requested earmarks. So more, we'll wait to hear more about how that plays out. And I believe that's all I have for tonight. Yes, sir?
Just one question on pump station two. That extension and time is a no-cost change order?
Correct.
And on this tracker list, the feedback I've heard, and it's been limited, and I haven't been able to look at it myself because I'm on this side of the camera, but item number eight, what I have heard is the system works well.
Don't ask today, please.
With the exception of today, the system works well. So ignoring the anomaly, I would suggest that we maybe take that off the list. It sounds like it's largely handled unless someone has negative feedback. What does anybody think?
Christie's already handling it, sir.
Yeah, I was actually thinking we probably need to refresh this list because it aligns with our objectives for the year and we're moving to a new year. So some of these may come off. I also wondered if maybe we should add stormwater because it's now being launched, I guess, as a tracker item?
I don't know. I think that, that one's kinda grown legs and it'll have to happen.
Well, no, I'm talking about what we're tracking in the, in the tracking list here.
If, if you want it there, I'm, I won't fight you.
We don't have to do it now, but it just seems like we should make sure this list is current with the current initiatives and priorities.
Yeah. How about a future discussion on that sometime? Because that's really something the board kinda owns. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, sir. Good job, Christie, as always.
You still up? Ms. Ferguson?
Actually, this is Mr. McCrany.
So the purpose of this transfer is just to be in compliance with the fund balance clause that the board set forth. And to finish off the transfers, the park were transferred, that was made in December.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve ordinance 2510 and instruct staff to make the transfer.
Second.
Motion made in second. Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Nye opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk?
See the answer.
Number 16, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. We had the required public hearing on the budget earlier tonight. I believe there were no public comments and now it's before you for consideration of action on the budget ordinance.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2511.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Nye opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Good job.
Number 17, Ms. Ferguson?
I'm gonna let Ms. Fennel take this one.
Increased wastewater revenues are needed to offset increased expenses. Based on our research comparative analysis of neighboring municipalities and feedback from the board, an increase of $3.90 is proposed, increasing the wastewater base charge to $20 per month. We would need to update the fee schedule to reflect the proposed fees. So our suggestion is to approve Resolution 2505.
Motion to approve Resolution 2505.
Second.
Discussion, anyone? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Nye opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Number 18, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Attached here in your packet is the Warden Smith contract. They did not change their fees this year over the previous year. I did also include for the board's benefit and the public's benefit, a rundown of items that they have helped us with and since they began with us. You could find those on pages 99 and 100. And so we bring this to you yearly and it's before you for consideration.
Motion, anybody?
Motion to approve. I'd like to make a motion to re-receive the proposal and instruct the interim town manager to exespute the contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Nye opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Number 19, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Again, this is a contract that also comes before you yearly. The, you got a supplement in your packet. Just to clarify a few things, the beautification club had some concerns. I did meet with them in, not gonna quote the date because I didn't go back to look, but it was the January, February timeframe. And they do work closely with our contractor with the works that they do in the gardens. The first proposal that went out in the packet listed annual flower plantings that were optional, but that is something the beautification club does. They did not intend to take over those plantings. That was just if something, if the town needed and we were not being charged for them in the new contract. But in the supplement went, that went out, that language was removed. And also, the cover sheet was updated that it's a 12-month agreement. Our discussions with beautification or the one that I had earlier in the year is that potentially the club may want to go out to bid after this year. It was too close of a timeframe when we had our discussion to try to get it together before you started your budget workshops this year. I will say that their maintenance for landscaping did go up 2%, which is pretty standard with their yearly cost of, they, their, their take on inflation. Irrigation did go down, but when you guys bid this out back in 2022, they were, I made a note here and I wrote it over it, they were either 57,000 or 59,000, whereas the next closest bid was 72,000 and the one above that was 87,600. So in order for you guys to maintain your service levels starting July 1, you would need to sign contract.
Motion to approve the contract.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Nye opposed, say no. Unanimous, again, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk. Ms. Ferguson, we're gonna give you a break.
Yes, sir. I'd appreciate it.
Ms. Fennel?
Their terms expiring on town boards in July. I would recommend that the board hold the special meeting to interview new members on the next meeting day at 4:45. So if the board's fine with that, I just need a consensus.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you'll send out a notice of what openings there are?
Sure will. Thank you.
What was that date again?
That's the date of our regular meeting?
Yeah, because 15 minutes early.
Good job. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Heather.
Ms. Ferguson?
I'm sorry. I'll ask for an exception from the board because I know I'm out of order. I forgot to give something that was relevant to today during my report, one of those since the time about a current event and social media. May I come, go back to that?
Anybody have an objection? You have the floor, Ms. Ferguson?
Okay. As issued by the town on social media, which just went away. Give me just a minute. I think we're plagued by some kind of, something in here getting us for... Thank you. "We appreciate the overwhelming support for the family who traveled to North Carolina via horseback to visit the beach. Unfortunately, it is unlawful for horses to be in with, within the corporate limits of the town. Our ordinance was communicated to the family earlier today when the situation was brought to our attention. The short notice of the request prevented staff from seeking an exemption to the ordinance. The town is unable to make exceptions for ordinance violations without going through the proper channels. The town of Holden Beach would have loved to welcome the family into our community if we were given the proper notice to support the request and even offer to provide vehicular transportation to the beach, but are unable to violate our own ordinances as it would set a precedent. We wish them the best in their future endeavors."
So did we post that somewhere or something?
We did on our social media.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Public comments. Anybody talk about anything you want to, good or bad influence. Come up here and speak into the microphone, give us your name and address.
Will Carter, 108 Starfish Drive, just talked to the engineer from HDR and asked him, you know, what's the life of this wood pier we're gonna build? He said about 25, 30 years. See how long this concrete pier lasted? I said 75 years. So we're gonna build a wood pier that can't insure. It'd go away any year. Never gonna be out for the wood pier. Or we could be paying a lot more for a concrete pier and structure that will last for 75 years. And we just wouldn't have to worry about it. And our kids wouldn't have to worry about it. We have a nice place. But we're gonna go ahead and build 1930's technology. We're gonna stick this wooden pier up there. We're not gonna be able to insure it. Put $10 million out here on the water and just hope that a wave doesn't come. You know, wood burns, wood floats and wood beams. But the concrete investment will be worth the money. We wouldn't have to redo it three more times in the next 75 years. Every time we redo it, it's gone. The bridge, bridge is gonna be 40 years old this next year. This building right here is about 18 years. I watched them all get built. And so I think we're just making a terrible mistake by spending the money when today's present value dollars would build a structure that would last for 75 years and a building that could also be made out of, out of concrete. The Roman structures are still standing. There is not a government building that's built these days. Any kind of government structure that's not built is built out of wood. It's crazy. It's a waste of money. Even from your own engineer, he'll tell you, 25, 30 years is the lifespan on what you're talking about building. So I certainly wish you wouldn't waste the money. I wish you would build it like every other structure around here that we build out of concrete. It'll last. Go look at the Roman structures. Anywhere you go, you'll see the concrete that's left from whatever structure. It's even underwater in Bermuda where the structures were there before the water rose. You're wasting, you're wasting our funds, you're wasting our time. And besides that, we need to have a price for a pier and a building at the same time. Let's don't mess around for a few years and build a pier and then let's mess around for a few more years to build a building. It all needs to be one done and one at one time. And you guys are just making a terrible mistake and it's not too late to quit and start and do it right. And it'll last forever. It'll be something we can be proud of forever. And if we can insure, I mean, the only, only bridge, only pier that's gone down is a little bit of Jackson Bill Beach's concrete here. And they were able to fix it because the rest of it was still in place during a hurricane. So before you spend $10 million that you can insure, let's just triple it, build a nice structure and everything, something we can be proud of that would match our bridge and our buildings and chapel and everything else. The wood decks right out, the sidewalks are gonna be there for 100 years.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else want to speak to anything about anything? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else want to speak to anything about anything? Last call. All right. Thank you so much. Mayor's comments are brief. The family of, there were four members of the family that's involved with the incident with a missing person. Came to my office today. It's a sad, sad time. Please keep them in your prayers. The hurricane season is upon us. I encourage everyone to review your hurricane plan for your property. And also, in regards to oceanfront houses, this situation yesterday reminded me again, we still have a good number of our oceanfront houses that do not have numbers that can be read from the ocean side of the house. So if there is a drowning or other emergency, people can't call 911 if they don't necessarily know the house number in front of where the incident's taking place. So all of the oceanfront owners, please check out your oceanfront side of your house for your house numbers. And they need to be large enough that you can read them from the high tide line on the beach strand. The same numbers that are on the street side of the house, in almost every case, are not big enough to be read from the high tide line. So please keep that in mind. The subject of fire attacks came up tonight in discussion, I think, from you, Tom. I've been communicating with county commissioners and our fire meeting over at the local fire department. And that's been discussed. And that's a very perplexing problem to try to figure out. I will simply say that this county is one of the few counties in the state that still is using the system of basic funds that we're using here. And I don't know where it's going to go in the future, but if anybody's got a solution to it, please bring it forward because it is a difficult problem to resolve. And with that, Tom Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming, or those of you listening online. Thank you for participating. Our next meeting will be after the 4th of July, so I wish you a happy Independence Day, happy 4th of July, and have a good rest of the month.
Rick?
Of course, I'd like to start out with thanking our staff. These guys, I've heard from more than one person from outside the box looking in. They just don't understand how we get as much done as we do with the size of staff we have. So it's really, you can't say enough about how well our staff works together, how well they work when they're understaffed, and to keep this island moving and to keep us, especially with all the influx of guests coming in, how hard they work. It is just, you just don't ever hear anything about stuff that isn't getting done. It all seems to get done somehow. So I just really want to thank everybody that worked so hard for the town of Holden Beach. Again, my pet peeve, golf carts. Please, the people that come vacation here, the people that live here, let us all be mindful of the golf carts. If you see them at the store or see them somewhere pulling off and they don't have seat belts, be nice and say, "Be safe. Put on your seat belts." You know, you don't have to be rude about it, but encourage the parents to look after their kids. Again, I want everybody that comes to vacation here to enjoy this beautiful island. We're truly blessed to have such a beautiful place to live. I want everybody also to realize that we're in turtle season. That it's, I think that we've already had some nests already and they're going to start becoming more numerous. And we need to be mindful, the ones that live out on the oceanfront, to keep your lights off at night. That doesn't mean close your curtains and you can't have your lamps on. But I mean, any lights that you have on the front of your house, it is a distraction for the turtles. So please keep that in mind. There is an ordinance in place for that, but we try to, everybody be a good steward of our turtle patrol. I want everybody to have a really happy and safe 4th of July, and let us be proud of the anniversary of the founding of our country. That's all, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
I just wanted to say that I agree with the mayor about the numbers on the houses on the ocean side. It's few and far between. I wonder if there's opportunity to use those new posts that the fire station put in to put numbers on those as it goes down every 300 or 600?
They have numbers on them.
Okay. Great. So at least we have that to reference.
Yeah, that is pretty cool. They do have those numbers on them.
Yeah, that's awesome. Just wanted to thank everyone for coming and have a great 4th of July.
Doctor?
I'd like to thank the first responders. It's barely the middle of June and they've already had a busy season. I know that's a hard, hard thing they had to go through yesterday and the diligence of continuing the search. And my prayers go out to the family, the friends involved. That's people that were even out sitting on the beach that had to watch that. That's not something that you want to see on your vacation. And I just want to thank the staff for the hard work on the budget. I don't think anybody realizes what it takes to put a budget together. So I'd like to thank you guys for getting it done.
Mr. Barfus?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I hope everybody has a happy and safe and enjoyable 4th. I would like to take the moment to thank staff for all the hard work for the budget and everything else. And I'd like to thank other commissioners here for all the work we got done recently. We got a lot done tonight. I think moves the town forward. So thanks. And I usually get the back cleanup, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion, sir.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all for being here. We're adjourned.